Know yourself. I'm sure T wants you to see it. We were, I was telling her, asked her if she's seen Mr. Smoke's email.
Ah. He, he's still been corresponding with me. He's mad that there's not a way to see it in the mini code. And that's fair. You know, we're trying to get them to publish, but. Anyway.
Yeah. I wasn't fast enough on my replies, Theresa, even though I don't think it would have mattered.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Hello, sir.
Hey there.
Good afternoon, Aaron, Ryan.
Hello.
Alicia, everyone. Teresa.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone.
I'm just gonna adjust my lighting now.
Ryan, are you ready?
I got my, uh, my RAM and my cache cleared. I restarted the computer. I'm ready to rock.
Got some caffeine?
We'll see. Well, I, yeah, that's, that's kind of a baseline day, so yeah. What could go wrong? Looking forward to it.
I'm gonna remember you said that.
Ryan, that's a jinx if I ever heard one.
Mm-hmm.
I know, I, the wheels were turning as I was, I was just gonna shut up. I'll shut up now and.
Well, and I was like, what happens? Cause you know, if, if our facilitator somehow goes offline, is that then go to you, Aaron?
Sure you all got it figured out.
Haven't like done that line of succession.
Oh, what's going wrong? It's homelessness.
I'm going to call us to order. Welcome everyone to the Thursday, February thirteenth, twenty twenty five special meeting of the Boulder City Council. Uh, Alicia, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you, and good evening, everyone. We'll start tonight's roll call as usual with Councilmember Adams.
Present.
Benjamin.
Present.
Mayor Brockin.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts. I thought she was here. All right. Marcus.
Present.
Shuhar.
Here.
Spear.
Present.
Wallack.
Here.
And Weiner.
Present.
Mayor, we have our quorum.
Thank you, Alicia. Okay, I'm going to start, uh, by requesting a motion to amend the agenda to add item two B, which would be the introduction, first reading, and consideration of a motion to order published by title or may adopt by emergency measure ordinance eighty six, eighty seven, mending section five, five, eighteen, suspension of facility privileges, BRC nineteen eighty one, to expand the list of facilities or buildings for which persons may be suspended for conduct endangering health, safety, or welfare of users or visitors, and setting forth related details.
So moved.
Second.
And a motion and second. Can I have a show of hands on that motion to amend the agenda, please? I got eight on that. So it's unanimous. Right. And then what that means then is our uh, first item um, on, um, on our agenda for this evening is to go into executive session. And then once that's concluded, we'll come back to what is now the item two B, that, um, ordinance that I've just described. So let me switch to my other script. All right, the one second. The city manager and the city attorney have requested an executive session pursuant to CRS section twenty four, six, four, oh, two, four, B, for a conference between city council and the attorneys for the city for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding emerging federal guidelines. This topic announcements, announcement provides as much detail as possible without compromising the purpose for which the executive session is authorized. So I will now entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to CRS section twenty four, six, four, oh, two, four, B, for a conference with the attorneys for the city for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding emerging federal guidelines.
So moved.
Like three of them. Can I get a second?
Second.
We got a motion and a second, so this motion for executive session must pass by two thirds of the quorum of council present. So Alicia, can we do a vote, please?
Yes, sir. We'll do the vote for the executive session, item two A. We'll start it with Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts, which is who's not here. So we'll start with Marcus.
Yes.
Shuhar.
Yes.
Spear.
Yes.
Wallack.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
And Mayor Brockin.
Yes.
The vote to go into executive session is hereby approved unanimously.
Very good. So that was an eight to zero vote to go into executive session. The motion has passed, so the council will now recess and reconvene immediately in a virtual executive session to discuss the matter previously stated for purposes previously stated. So I'll recess us from this meeting now. We'll see you in the virtual executive session.
Sarah Huntley, Matthew Benjamin, Nicole Spear, Mary Rivera Vandermeide, Chris Reynolds, Tara Weiner, Chris Messchuck, Lauren Folkerts, Tina Marquess, Carl Castillo, Mark Wallach, Erin Brockett, Brian Schuhardt, and Roberto Ramirez. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not included in the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the open meetings law, I ask that you state your concerns for the record at this time. All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and continue us back to the February 13th special meeting agenda and resume that special meeting. All right, we have one item of business left on that special meeting. Elisha, if you can take us to the consent agenda, please.
All right, sir, thank you. Our consent agenda tonight consists of items, item two A.
Very good. So I would invite a motion on the consent agenda, if anyone has any comments or questions about it.
I make a motion to pass our consent agenda?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second, seeing no other hands raised. Elisha, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. We'll start the gen- the roll call vote for the consent agenda item two A with Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts.
Yes.
Councilmember Marquess.
Yes.
Schuhardt.
Yes.
Spear.
Yes.
Wallach.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
And Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
The in the consent agenda item two A is hereby adopted by emergency measure, that is ordinance eighty-six eighty-seven.
Very good. Well, thanks, everybody. That concludes our special meeting for February thirteen, twenty twenty-five. So I'm going to go ahead and gavel that closed. It's five fifty-eight P M. And if we can just take a two-minute pause, please, so we don't start earlier than anybody expects. And then Ryan, I'll hand it over to you to facilitate the study session, starting at six P M. Thanks, everybody.
Good evening, council, thank you. So I'm Kirk Fernhoffer, and I support the Department of Housing and Human Services. Tonight, we'll be presenting a lot of data evaluations and strategies to address homelessness. However, before we start, I want to ground us in this conversation, that this work is about impacting the lives of individuals and families. I want to share a very short story. Our peer support program started with focused reentry a couple years ago. There was an individual that had been unhoused for several years and had transitioned into housing successfully. They were later hired as a peer navigator and began assisting others who were also going into housing or just landed in housing. This peer has been helping individuals in groups with activities such as how to connect with food, food bank, where to go for medical counseling help, as well as group activities that include fun, learning, relationship building, and connecting with our community. A few weeks ago, we opened the extreme weather shelter. This peer, on their own initiative, came over to spend time with those staying there, with painting pictures, playing games, and building relationships. This peer has become a successful role model. Not only did this individual help others, but they found real pride in the process of doing so. I think you'll find that our community partners and our staff are relentless in their dedication to helping individuals like the homelessness and stay successfully in their housing. I want to more fully lift up the individuals who are going through these steps of exiting homelessness. We are partners. We are partners with them in this journey. And if we could just, hold on for one second, sorry. Just looking at the, we could pull the slides up. We could move on to that, thank you. And you can go to the next slide. So tonight, as mentioned, we have three sections. The first is led by Megan Newton, who will cover the results of this work over the last year and present some trends we have seen. We will then receive a report on the evaluation, which is presented by Meg Chamberlain of the Public Policy Associates. The last section will focus on how we move forward with evolving our homeless strategy from twenty seventeen. This new homeless strategy work going forward will be led by Mark Wolf, the Assistant City Manager, and with him, Mandy Chapman of Butch Consulting. We also have with us tonight Susanna Lopez Baker and Trevor Behringer to answer any questions you may have of Boulder County. And then we'll pause after each presentation to discuss the associated question. If you could go to the next slide. Thank you. And so as we look at twenty, at the update from twenty seventeen, when our homeless strategy was initiated, I want to just highlight a few very short milestones since that time. So over two thousand people have exited homelessness from our city. A local voucher program has allowed us to house people that would have otherwise struggled to find housing with our federal and state voucher requirements. Three hundred and seventy-nine people were able to avoid ever entering homelessness as a result of our diversion program. We opened a COVID recovery center for respite and care for COVID-positive unhoused individuals. Thinking it would be a few weeks, it ended up being open for over two years. Two more permanent supportive housing developments were opened over this time, and we now have three in Boulder. Our citizens passed an eviction prevention program that has served over twenty-three hundred individuals with eviction prevention mediation, rent, and medical services. The Haven Ridge organization has expanded its program with a larger facility and more beds. Bridge House is ready to work, opened in South Boulder and expanded elsewhere. And finally, we opened a day service center nine months ago to provide services for individuals. And if you can turn to the next slide, I will now hand it over to Megan, who will start this summary of last year. Thank you.
Good evening, council, can you hear me? Okay, great. For some reason, it keeps giving me a warning about my camera, so I'm going to do this with camera off, I apologize. Good evening, my name is Megan Newton. I am the Policy Advisor on Homelessness in Housing and Human Services. And I'm going to start the first part of this discussion, and I'll quickly lay the groundwork reviewing the current system, key data trends, and program developments from this past year. On this slide, it's showing the current continuum of services. I want to be sure to say that this is not the entire network of support, but this is only showing programs that the city provides funding towards. The system focuses on six core areas: prevention, outreach, shelter, housing, and housing retention, and we also have some health services attached to these programs. As you can see, the city's investments are across the entire continuum. Next slide, please. In the next few slides, we're going to look at some of the trends around homelessness in Boulder the past couple of years. The graph on your top left shows data from coordinated entry indicating an increase in individuals who report to have been in Boulder for less than a month at the time of their C E screening. This trend just informs how we tailor our homelessness response strategies. And while we know this number is high, a majority of the individuals are coming from the region, and it underscores the importance of working on these issues regionally. The top right graph shows point-in-time numbers of unsheltered single adults during the last two years, while the bottom right graph shows point-in-time numbers from the last two years for single adults, but includes both sheltered and unsheltered. As you can see, all of those numbers have been going down in each count for the last couple of years. The bottom left shows the exits from homelessness over the last few years. In twenty twenty-four, we had two hundred and sixty-four people exit homeless, which is homelessness, which is a slight decrease from the last two years. Next slide, please. Now we're going to look at some shelter trends. In the previous slide, we saw some decreasing trends in point-in-time numbers, but we have seen an increase in individuals accessing services and the shelter. The graph on the left shows a percentage of nights with capacity turnaways per month. That peaked in November with eighty-three percent of the nights having turnaways. Warmer months were a little bit lower, such as May and October, where rates were around forty-eight percent. You can see in July, we added twenty beds with fairly little impact to the system. The graph on the right shows the average number of turnaways per night per month, which follows a similar seasonal trend hitting a peak at November. I do want to point out, though, that all of these numbers, although these just show this year, they're all higher than previous years. Shelter demand at the shelter has been higher this year than we've seen before. Next slide. This is the third year in a row where we've added an additional shelter to support overflow during an extreme weather event. As these events have occurred year after year, we've been, we've been better prepared. The one that we just did in January, we were able to serve ninety unique individuals over a three-night period, utilizing eight hundred and eighty-four personnel hours at a cost of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars. This year, we increased our partnership and coordination with, with All Roads and Focus Reentry, and it helped us to have a smoother experience. Next slide, please. Now we'll transition into some housing trends. As I said just before, two hundred and sixty-four individuals exited homelessness in twenty twenty-four, which is a slight decrease from last year. The graph on the left, the purple bars, show the number of individuals entering the system during those time periods, while the yellow bars show the number of individuals exiting. And although we saw fewer individuals exit in twenty twenty-four, due to the, also a decrease in individuals entering the system, the exit rates are actually improving. The thirty-nine, with the thirty-nine percent exit rate in twenty twenty-four, that's been higher than previous years. The graph on the right shows the number of individuals exiting five months. High numbers in January and October reflect the opening of Bluebird and Xenia, which are dedicated permanent supportive housing projects. We are concerned the exits are going down despite having these, these two big projects opening this year. But I will also note that we had some state housing vouchers that were frozen in twenty twenty-four, which likely contributed to the decreased exits. We do have some additional units coming online this year through Hilltop and Raleigh Flats, as well as some state housing vouchers that are attached to the Day Services Center. So, but overall, we are expecting fewer new resources in twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. So we looked at the response system, we've looked at some trends, and I'm going to go quickly through some of our new programs. I'm starting with the Day Services Center. The Day Service, the Day Center is intended to offer a low-barrier entry point for people who may not be accessing other programs and connecting them to critical services all in one location. So these are basic services as all the way up through housing. Since opening, the Day Services Center has recorded thousands of visits, showing the high demand for daytime services. There are currently fifteen partner agencies providing services within the Day Services Center. Eighty-five percent of the clients accessing the center also connect with partner programs, meaning they're not just going for a shower or a meal, but they're also accessing services as a pathway to long-term solutions. The site has onsite behavioral health, addiction, addiction services, medical care, respite, peer support specialists, and housing navigation, all trying to meet the different needs of the folks entering this, entering the center. We were also able to get thirty state housing vouchers tied to the center, and so those folks are already starting to get matched and connected to housing. The graph on the right shows the average daily attendance, where it started out fairly even, but spiked up later in the year, probably both due to the weather and due to folks learning at the center. Next slide, please. While permanent supportive housing has been shown to be an effective solution, some people still struggle with isolation, behavioral health needs, and navigating services. So using ARPA dollars, we, we started a program called Building Home that helps individuals overcome these challenges and to support long-term success. Focus Reentry leads the peer support program, providing one-on-one support, as well as outings, classes, and social support. All Roads operates the housing retention team, providing clinical support services to individuals. The program has been highly successful. They had an eighty-eight percent retention rate for twenty twenty-four and a ninety-four percent retention rate over the last two years. But as I just noted, this program is ARPA-funded, so we are currently exploring next steps for what happens when this funding expires. Next slide, please. Now going to turn it over to Carl Castillo, real quick, to give us a brief update on the high utilizer initiative.
Thank you, Megan. Yes, my name is Carl Castillo, I'm the Chief Policy Advisor in the City Manager's Office. And I'm going to briefly speak about these next two slides. And I want to highlight that as we shift to discuss high utilizers, we are focusing on a different kind of effort. We're not talking about decreasing the number of unhoused individuals. We're talking about decreasing utilization of the criminal justice system. This is a crime reduction effort that focuses on responding to individuals that have the greatest impact to community public safety, while also exposing themselves to harm. But the reason we're including this in this conversation is because it overlaps with our homelessness work. All of the individuals on the high utilizers list are currently unhoused, and the primary solution to help respond and help them is to help them exit homelessness. So that's the connection. This, in fact, began as an effort in twenty twenty-two between Housing and Human Services and our police department. But as you all know, it has expanded into a task force composed of cross-agency leaders involved in criminal justice and all the service providers. This slide here, I think one thing I need to highlight is there is no program right now. This is essentially an initiative, ongoing collaboration. There's been no new funding that has been directed for this purpose. Nevertheless, it is a new use of our existing resources that has resulted in some successes. And what you see there in the far right of the slide is that of the individuals that have been put on the high utilizers list since three years, because each year we rerun it, twenty-five percent of those have since been housed and are still housed. So certainly a success. But we know that this is not enough. Next slide, please. So this is where we talk about the program, the proposed program. And this is, this is what we spoke with council at the retreat last year. The, these bulbs hanging there, hanging there on the slide are describing the comprehensive response that we feel is really needed to move the needle now and in the future with regards to high utilizers. It describes a program that would be about five million dollars in the first year, recognizing that this was a very difficult time to be considering raising that kind of money. We did scale it back to a phased program that focuses on the three blue bulbs that are hanging there. The green bulbs would be provided instead through existing resources, kind of re, can't think of the word, was basically reallocating some existing resources, so it wouldn't cost any additional funds. And we are exploring ways to do that, and this would cost, this phase approach would cost one point seven million dollars. So currently, we're exploring how we can fund this, and one of the approaches is to reach out to our philanthropic community, and we're doing that, and we're doing that by doing it in awareness campaign, where they understand there are goals. And we believe that while we have not made any formal requests yet, we'll basically kind of test in the water, seeing, you know, what resonates and what the initial thoughts are. We believe that fundraising is the best way to engage the community and be part of the solution. Last thing I want to highlight is that some people ask, why focus resources on so few people, especially individuals who are hard to support? And the answer, I believe, is it is, it provides us the greatest opportunity to improve the greatest number of lives. And that's both the people who are on the high utilizers list, as well as those who are housed, and just generally the community. So it's just an important way to look at the different perspective when we measure success and we measure effectiveness when we talk about the high utilizers proposed program. Back to you, Megan. Next slide.
Thanks, Carl. On this final slide, I'm just going to talk through a couple of growing areas of need around both prevention and family homelessness. We know the best way to reduce homelessness is to prevent it from happening in the first place. This avoids disruption and trauma for individuals and families. Prevention is also the most cost-effective intervention. Some of the key strategies that we've been using is legal services and mediation to help prevent evictions before they happen, financial assistance, and rental support to help residents stay housed, and then a high level of collaboration between government, nonprofits, and community partners, which strengthen these efforts. The graph on your right shows family homelessness through B V S D, McKinney-Vento, which is the definition used by the federal government in the schools. And as you can see, those numbers remain high post-COVID and beyond the Marshall Fire surge. They show a sustained need for support, and in twenty twenty-four, we saw a record demand for eviction prevention services, stretching all available resources. We've tried to fill some gaps with ARPA funds, but they will be expiring in twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Next slide. So that concludes the very first part, with just the quick updates before we get into the meat of the night with the system evaluation and the strategy development. So I think we would take questions on that part now.
Thank you, Megan, Carl, and Kurt. Normally, we do clarifying questions first, but this item really is about what questions you have. So I would suggest we just, just do this, this item. We'll ask, what, what questions do you have? And if you have any questions that are about clarifying what you heard just now, please just roll that in if that feels good. And then in the next presentation, we'll do question and then feedback.
If we could pull down the slides as well.
Yeah, please, thank you. Let me, let's see here. Okay, I thought I was going to see numbers in order of what people raise their hands, but I'm not seeing that.
So Ryan, if you pull up the participants tab, it will show people in the order that their hand was raised.
Sorry, participants tab?
If you click on the button labeled participants on the bottom.
There we go, thank you, Erin. Okay, let me. Sorry, I'm, yeah, okay, so I see panelists, and I see four with a hand, but I'm.
And they are in the order that they raised their hands.
Oh, here we go, okay, I had to do a little refresh. Looks like Tara, Tara, were you first? Can you, does that look right, were you first? I think you were.
I could have been.
Okay, thanks, thanks for the tutorial. Tara, please.
What is an assurance fund?
That's a fund, we already have one that has contributed both the city of Boulder, Boulder County, and Boulder Housing Partners, and it basically just helps us to engage landlords in this work. So some of them are skeptical to rent to folks who may not have a rental history. And so it ordered a kind of a selling point for folks, is to know that if there's any damage to their unit, up to a certain amount, that they could apply for those funds.
Tara, anything else for you? Okay, Mark. I think you might be on mute, Mark.
Of course I am, and I'm never on mute, and I ought to be. With respect to family homelessness, in terms of amounts of funding, how much are we dedicating to that effort? And how many people are we serving?
Kurt or Elizabeth, would you know a better answer to that one?
Councilwoman Elizabeth Crowe, Deputy Director of Housing and Human Services. I've actually got the Grant Management System platform pulled up for questions with twenty-four, twenty twenty-four numbers, which we just got about a week ago. So I'd be happy to do a quick scan of some of the reports. So I'd be happy to do a quick scan of some of the reports that we just got in and and provide you a total. One example I can tell you in terms of the number of clients served, just because I'm looking at it right now. For the Keep Families House program, in two thousand and twenty four, the city allocated four hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward that program, which again provides up to three months of financial assistance, rental assistance and other supports for families who are housing insecure. So in two thousand and twenty four, they serve six hundred and twenty four unduplicated families through the project. That doesn't mean that those, some of those families aren't also receiving services from other programs that we fund. So there would be a fair amount of duplication. Some of those families might be showing up on the McKinney Vento list, for example. SPAN is another agency. I can look up those numbers quickly for two thousand and twenty four. Maybe if there's another question, I could come back to me and I can provide a little more detail.
And what was the number that you just gave me and not not the number of people served, but the amount of the dollar amount?
The amount is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to just for the Keep Families House program. We allocate other funds to EFA for shelter basic needs. To Safe House, Progressive Alliance for Nonviolence for their shelter services and other supports. Those are the two agencies that we fund directly that primarily serve families for prevention, homelessness prevention as well as, you know, with vouchers. I think the some of that information is in the memo for people who are experiencing, families who are experiencing episodes of homelessness.
Ryan, did you want to hear any comments at this time or just the questions?
I think this is, we're being asked to provide questions. And then in the next presentation, we have two more presentations that those are intended for feedback. Does that seem okay with you, Mark?
Well, it's it's fine. I just want to know what the.
Okay, so just.
Moment.
Yeah, just the questions for now. Anything else, any other questions then, Mark?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Tina?
Yep. And can I just ask a quick clarifying off of Mark's question? Of the four hundred and fifty thousand or what the amount was, is that all from city funds or is that a mix of other funds?
Sure. So that four hundred and fifty thousand is a non competitive allocation that we make through our Human Services Fund, which is local dollars from the general fund. EFA does raise additional funds to keep that program going as well as for other programs, which the city funds.
Okay, thanks. I, so one of the, you mentioned that we're anticipating fewer new resources. And I'm wondering if that is something Boulder will be experiencing or if the whole region and state will be having the same resource scarcity. I'm just trying to get a landscape of what we're looking at sort of together as a state.
I'll I'll start with that. And I believe Elizabeth may have input to that as well. I think the biggest impact that we're experiencing now, we we do about in advance. And that's the cliff effect of ARPA funds. That's something that we'll be experiencing even now in the end of two thousand and twenty six. And our building home program is our primary program within the homelessness scope that's related to to ARPA funds. So that's a program that we're looking at either additional grant funding opportunities from the state. And so we're currently doing the review and compiling. And really analyzing the various funding sources, particularly particularly federal funding sources. And looking at, you know, potential risk about that. But we don't really know where that's going at this point. Elizabeth, if you can, you want to add a little bit more about your efforts around that as well?
Yeah, so just as Kurt said, there, in terms of ARPA being one example, not only have we been using ARPA funds for some of the specific programs you've heard about, but we've also been using ARPA funds to help keep the keep the coffers more full for our older adult services and family resource schools programs, which well before COVID have been able to allocate financial support, including rental assistance to either families and older adults. And I say older adults because we do have multi generational households there. We've also been using some ARPA funds over the last several years to supplement what we have for our ERIS program. When that program first launched, we had to kind of borrow money from ourselves from the city, which we've been paying back. Now, we no longer, all the all the money is paid back. We've paid ourselves back. And so we have a little bit more revenue to be able to use for rental assistance, legal support mediation. We've also just increased the the excise tax, which will add a little bit more into that bucket. But we only, of course, have additional ARPA funds to spend probably any more closer to eighty or ninety thousand, I believe, through the end of the ARPA expenditure deadline. So so that's just saying, right, that that's another source that will be that will be going away. There are also some federal ARPA funds that have been going through the state and then to the county for the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. In the memo, I believe we described the changes that have already been taking place and pretty dramatic decline in Boulder families and other families around the state who will be able to tap that source. So we're already seeing those declines and we're obviously tracking very carefully what the what the impacts will mean if the demands stay as high as they are now.
And then, so regionally, do, so, you know, I read a lot of headlines and I'll read a headline like Alamosa decides not to open a shelter. Or, you know, a different town is doubling down on a camping den. Are we seeing the need in the region to be overall increasing? Should we be expecting more pressure to provide services and housing at a regional level? Because we know a lot of the folks we're serving are not becoming homeless in Boulder. Do we, are we sort of projecting out what the future might look like for us in terms of demand?
So Elizabeth is also, we also is running initiative to connect with all of our nonprofit partners. As she spoke about, and really, they're the ones that are probably closest to the hearing, hearing and understanding the trends of that. And in recent meetings that I've been in with those, the organizations that are doing that work, they they are expressing a lot of concern around the ability to support, according to the regionally. And so, yes, we are keeping an eye on that. But I'll also mention that, so our our family resource work in the in the schools, they also provide rental support to to families. And Elizabeth mentioned the older adults, we have rent support at a smaller level within that program as well.
Okay, and then just the final question for now. We mentioned the importance of preventative dollars, but about eighty percent of the people that we serve don't, we can't really impact with prevention because they don't live in the city of Boulder. Do do we work with regional partners to see how we can help them create stronger preventative systems? So that we have a sort of a regional effort on prevention that might sort of help all of us?
So Elizabeth, you want to take that first? I've got some ideas as well, but.
I'll I'll start off. So the short answer is yes, we do have really strong regional collaborations. One of them is the Family Resource Network, which is a countywide network managed by, kind of administered by Boulder County that includes all of our local government agencies, human services agencies, as well as a number of nonprofits that are working on many other supports for families, but including homelessness prevention. I, myself, Vicky Upner, Karen Armstrong, several others from our city HHS team are directly engaged in FRN. And that group is is really working not only on kind of strategies that we can all use, kind of for impacts better than the sum of our parts. And leaning into advocacy a little bit more, I think we included a link in the memo to a call to action that the FRN put together at the end of last year. We're still getting a little media bounce from that, but the goal of that was to really kind of provide a united message to our community at large that our organizations are really, really at capacity for meeting these needs. And dollars don't always create more staff time and capacity, but but they but they often do. And they certainly help enable those funds to be passed along to people who need them directly. And so that's another kind of example of where we're not only kind of turning to each other and saying, what have you got? But kind of putting back out to our community the challenge and encouraging them to support these agencies with funds, with time, and certainly by paying attention to what policies are impacting people we're trying to serve.
Thanks.
Nicole?
Thank you. And thanks so much for the presentation and just consolidating all the information in the memo. Appreciate that. I just had a couple of questions about the the Respite Center, since that's kind of a newer thing. But in the memo, it mentioned that there was going to be some clinical care expansion at the Respite Center. And I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about what that looks like.
Sure. We were partnering with Clinica Family Health and they will be providing some clinical care both at the Respite Center, so meaning the folks that are in the respite beds when they get typically they'll be discharged from the hospital. And they'll have a nurse led care that comes into, goes to those beds and helps folks. They're at the shelter as well as connecting them to outpatient care for long term needs as well. With that contract, we were able to expand their services also into the Day Services Center. So as you might have known, historically, there's been a street medicine team that has that did have funding to continue. So although this won't go out on the street, it does provide another low barrier location for folks to come in and really access that frontline medical care. And then again, with them being connected to Clinica, the good piece of that is then they can connect them to ongoing care after after they may be done in the respite program.
Thank you. No, I appreciate knowing that. And that's really great that we were doing that. The other question I had is for families that are experiencing homelessness. Are they, is Clinica providing them with services too? Do we have a place like the Respite Center for, say, that maybe a parent needs to recover or something like that? What are we, where do families go in an all your situations?
So that's an area that Elizabeth can also respond to.
Here again, I'll start and then Megan, feel free to to jump in as well. So the short answer is because we don't have a family shelter like we do All Roads for single adults, that we don't have anything that is, it's no apples to apples comparison. However, it's true definitely that families in our community who are housing insecure or or homeless still can be served at Clinica. There are also a number of other programs that help with that, some of which are, again, mentioned in the memo. I think organizations everyone's familiar with, Mother House, if you're there, you're not only sheltered if you're pregnant. Person who's pregnant with with children, you're not only getting shelter, but you also have access to those medical services. There's a county program called Family Connects, which the city helped provide seed funding for years ago with our Health Equity Fund that provides similarly services to pregnant women, their children who may be homeless. And basically, if you're, if you're getting services either through our Family Resource Schools or one of our nonprofit agencies like EFA, you're you're in that network. SPAN is another example. You're in that network. If if that agency isn't directly able to connect you to medical services or provide those direct services, they connect to others who can. I know from our Family Connects colleagues at Boulder County that sometimes that does mean, you know, referring to sheltering opportunities that might be outside of our community, which is never most people's first choice. They want to stay here and connected, but those opportunities exist as well.
Thank you.
Matt?
Thanks, Ryan. Thankfully, my colleagues have asked much of the questions I had lined up. It leaves me only a couple. A question I have, we, you know, we seem to know pretty well what it costs to build housing in our community. And in particular, as we move into PSH work, I was just wondering, you give us a sense on how much it costs to support PH, PSH, sort of on a year to year ongoing basis?
Sure, I'll I'll take that one, Matt. Thank you. So it's probably in the range of probably three hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand a year. Currently, the the Bluebird facility is getting that from from various sources. And that is a a component of that is definitely needed as we build that type of portfolio. So that's something that we're not, we're not really budgeting for in our standard performance, but it's extremely important components of PSH. It's an ongoing cost to the program roughly in the, you know, the three to four hundred thousand dollar range.
Just a quick, that's three to four hundred thousand dollars for like a Bluebird that serves that number of people, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, appreciate it. And sort of given what we've learned, sort of in hindsight, looking at the numbers and looking at some of the successes and other challenges in two thousand and twenty four, and also knowing we have a homelessness strategy that will come later this year and likely, you know, begin implementation in two thousand and twenty six. That leaves two thousand and twenty five and we're already a month in. And I'm just sort of curious, based on what we saw in two thousand and twenty four, are there any, are there any changes, modifications, things that in this year before we have a full flushed out strategy that you feel you want to tweak, modify or 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 switch around a little bit, just based on what you're seeing and sort of adapting in real time?
So Megan can can add to this as well. I think that we've been adapting since two thousand and seventeen. And that adaptation is ongoing. And the the adaptation, I think, revolves around three or four different things. One is getting units or rooms in place for people to transition to. So having the assets of housing. The other is the voucher. The other is the supportive services that we, as we just talked about. And, you know, the other is the outreach and supports to get them and the services they need to to make that transition. So I think along the way, we, particularly over the last two or three years, we've seen some things where we have had to modify, where we've seen holes or shortfalls. I think initially in our work over the last few years, there's been great success in in housing a number of individuals. And we've we've had to play catch up in providing the services and support they need to be successful in that housing. And so one of the evolutions was, you know, the Building Home Program, Peer Support Program. You know, having more intensive and more capacity in supporting behavioral health for individuals. You know, helping with that transition also to substance use. I think the, where I've seen the biggest maybe concern or hole in our program as we try to figure out how to grow would really be around the keeping the services at scale to to the housing and continuing to try to develop the right housing resources that the strategy is going to need. So Megan, I, with you off screen, it's, I hope I'm not interrupting you, but if you have something to add, that would be great.
No, I think you covered it. It is one of those things that as things, I think I agree with you, that we've been changing in flight for quite a while to address things as they come up.
Matt, anything else from you? Okay, I don't see any more hands going once, going twice. Okay. Kurt, back to you for our second of three presentations.
Yeah, so I'm going to, yeah, thanks for bringing up the slides. And I will hand it over to our colleague from PPA. And let's go to, there we go. Thank you. It's all yours.
Uh, great. I wasn't aware I was presenting this slide, but let me talk to you a little bit about. The HSBC evaluation that we are. Actually, you know what? Megan or Kurt, this was your slide to present, was it not? If not, we can move forward.
It is. So let's, Megan can jump in.
Okay, great. I was like, I'm gonna try and win this, but I think that let's let the expert speak. Megan, go ahead.
No, I just, before Meg did her presentation on the evaluation, just wanted to do a real quick. Review on HSBC and the current structure. And the HSBC executive team prioritized the system evaluation. To assess the effectiveness and improve services coordination. Boulder City Council identified this evaluation as a priority. And HSBC engaged with Public Policy Associates to conduct the independent review. Using both qualitative and quantitative analysis. So Meg is going to hear from PPA and she'll, she'll present their findings. But one thing I wanted to add before Meg gets on here is that due to feedback, some changes have already started. Around the, the executive board where now two representatives per government entity are appointed. By each entity, so no longer the county commissioners that have, have to approve those. And the chair will be rotating where historically it's been someone from the county as the chair, but now it will start rotating. So those. Those two changes of, changes have already come into effect, but now I will turn it over to Meg to start her presentation.
Thank you, Megan. Okay, so next slide. Okay, sort of, the conversation today, I will be walking through what we learned during the 2024 system evaluation of HSBC. I want to start by thanking you all for the time to come and present. I'm really excited to. Get to engage with you all. So if we could move on to the next slide, let's, let's get started. So as Megan mentioned and hinted at, we used a mixed methods approach in order to do both sort of the quantitative analysis of getting an understanding of. All of the, what is all of the data saying? From a numbers perspective, what are the characteristics of the population? What can we learn from the way funding is being allocated? And then we also used a significant amount of primary data collection and qualitative analysis to. Understand more of the perspectives on the ground. So we did interviews with governing body parties, including the city of Boulder. City of Longmont, Boulder County, and the Metro Denver Homeless Initiative. We did roundtables with system partners and service providers throughout the HSBC system. Those were conducted through many of the work groups that are already part of HSBC's regular process. And then we did focus groups. With people experiencing homelessness and people who have lived experience but who are now housed. We conducted those over the course of a week in the month of September in 2024. With sheltered, unsheltered, and now housed individuals for 50 participants total. If we could move on to the next slide. So just to frame the conversation, we used the. Usage framework to sort of guide our thinking here and to frame the analysis. So many of the research questions were focused around things that look at those foundations around how is the collaboration working? What data and evidence are informing that? And how is it, and, and what is the equity? And then for this evaluation, because of HSBC's focus, we included programs that were focused on crisis response and. Housing and supports. The prevention piece is less a part of that system. In addition, it's important to note that the HSBC is a fairly unique and really kind of powerful collaborative that exists. Below the COC. Most homeless systems are collaborating, collaborating at that COC level and HSBC has taken that even a level. More granular. And also, as has been discussed throughout in different places, this system serves single adults only. So as I go through the findings, know that those are the pieces that are part of the evaluation. All right, next slide, please. So I think the top line finding here really is that our evaluation affirms HSBC's approach. I think. That what we've learned is not surprising. Housing first continues to be the best practice with. A significant amount of evidence backing it up. But on top of that, like the usage framework isn't useful for a reason. Collaboration is deeply important. As is data-driven decision-making. And, and those are things that HSBC is committed to. Unfortunately. In, in not every case does the right approach mean that you will, that you will have quick success. This work is continuing to be hard and messy and deeply impacted by context and local factors. So as. We've already heard about this evening, there are flows from. The region, so homelessness is increasing in the region and particularly in Boulder County. Or at least for the years analyzed, I should say. The data we analyzed were from 2022 and 2023, but. The large drivers, which is the take home, were newly homeless and people coming. From the geography. And so the findings that follow are organized into six themes. With some associated recommendations for HSBC to consider as it's thinking on improving its impact. So if we could go to the next slide, please. So the findings are organized around data systems, equity, community, climate, housing and supports, crisis services. And collaboration. When I designed the presentation, I, I designed it to be like a game board. We could click into whichever conversation was of interest first. But we're just going to go through in order today. So moving to data systems, next slide, please. The evaluation finds that there is a clear commitment to data-driven decision-making within HSBC and. The value of this approach was reinforced both by the literature, but also by the participants in the qualitative data gathering. However, a significant barrier exists in the lack of integration between. The major data system used in the county, which is the Connects data system and the HMIS data system, which is the nationwide. Data system. And I think there are, if you read into more detail in the findings in the report, there are good reasons for those. Disconnects, but whatever it is, it is, for whatever reason, it significantly limits the ability. To really do some of that data-driven decision-making and also thinking more about doing. Modeling and predictive analytics as you move forward. Excuse me. And I know that there are already some efforts in place to make that connection. So I think that that is something that is. Going to change and improve in the next, in the future. Moving on to the next slide. For equity, there is a general sense among providers, among clients. And overall, the, the things are being done equitably. The most concerns, particularly from people experiencing homelessness. Were more related to not understanding the way the prioritization formula works. And also not fully understanding that the systems are distinct. Between those that serve single adults as opposed to families and some concerns around whether it was equitable when they observed. Different outcomes in different populations. So this general sense could be formalized into data through a regular process of equity assessment. And through meaningfully engaging with those people with lived experience to include them in the decision-making processes. The other recommendations include reviewing current data systems with an equity lens to incorporate. More inclusive demographic options and consider how some of those. How the silos that exist between sort of the single adults as opposed to families. Means that certain individuals fall between the systems or are overlapping. So for example, single adults. That have and then lose and then regain custody of their child may. Move between the systems and that can cause real challenges. So I'm thinking more about how to better serve across those silos. Next slide, please. A, a major finding particularly from people from the focus group work is that the community climate in the county is. Fairly hostile to people experiencing homelessness. And so our recommendation there is to shift that through public education. That really highlights the human stories behind the statistics and gives a platform to those with lived experience. I was in a webinar today about the welfare, child welfare system, talking about how home visits have. Really changed things. And, and one of the ways in which. That conversation was most powerful is when she told a story about an actual family impacted. And that is one of the things that we're recommending here. Next slide, please. So in the space of housing and supports, it's clear that the county prioritizes affordable housing and they are committed to the. Housing first approach. And I think that continuing that priority is of great value. In addition, there are potential opportunities to. Sorry, excuse me, as was already brought up in the questions, permanent supportive housing is an evidence-based. Intervention that works long-term, but also requires funding long-term. And so thinking about that now. Is an important way to identify sustainable pathways. Also thinking about ways to leverage the fact that you have a regional collaborative with other cities. Of different sizes and with different needs, but there might be ways to leverage a collective effort to operate most efficiently. Finally, one of the things we were careful to look into is the sort of newer options for emergency shelter. Or at least some of the newer evidence around things like safe outdoor spaces. And sanctioned encampments. And while we found that there's evidence those can be effective. In most cases to do that well, it's, it's, it's quite expensive. And so being cautious about whether undertaking a new. Effort as opposed to just continuing to invest in what you're already doing, there's, there are trade-offs there. Okay, next slide, please. The next piece is looking at continuing to fund evidence-based retention services and. Evaluating them for efficacy. And I think this is something that's already come up in our conversation today. Or at least in some of the earlier presenters conversation around. The ARPA dollars that were already used to stand up novel programs around retention and peer support, which are. Have, which are strong evidence-backed practices. Finding ways to continue that will be important. And in addition, continuing to fund some of the other pieces like landlord supports. Where you're offering incentives to encourage landlords to take vouchers and those types of things. These are all crucial ways to make a, the investment that it takes to get someone housed last. Next slide, please. Similar to thinking about shelter. I apologize. I'm now realizing that I talked about this point on the housing slide. And what I meant to say was that. We also did a deep dive into what the evidence around some of the alternative housing ideas like tiny homes. And those sorts of things. And we found similar to what I'm, is on the slide here, there should caution should be undertaken in. In pursuing those because they often are. If not more financially expensive, similarly difficult to stand up. So apologies for that confusion. So on this slide. For crisis response, again, considering the alternative shelter options. Should be done with caution to determine they're appropriate and not draw focus away from long-term solutions. Also, crisis response services that were of most importance, particularly, this is a finding from the focus groups. That street outreach and case management were the consistently, the. Critical pieces for, for resolving homelessness. In addition. There were significant geographical gaps, which had to do with the spread of the size of the county and is probably of less relevance directly to the city of Boulder. And again, in the crisis response vein, peer support can be another evidence-based practice. To engage individuals and get them involved in the system. Next slide, please. The last few slides are on the collaborative as a whole. Our findings here were. There was a lot of discussion in all of our qualitative research around the sort of collaboration. And we found a lot of strength and a few challenges. Communication around service provision, the ability to partner on funding opportunities. Reducing duplication of services and working across silos were all huge strengths. For challenges, there were noted difficulties navigating diverse priorities for various stakeholders. And the qualitative data suggests that there are, there may be conflicting priorities about geographic areas and partner organizations. Now I think it's worth also saying that the funding analysis, the quantitative analysis. Didn't appear to support the concern about sort of major funding priority shifts or disagreements. But the perception that there are challenges is an important thing to note. And so if we can move on to the next slide. Our largest, our, our key recommendation on collaboration is that it, to move past those perceptions of, of. Any kind of difficulty is, the best option is through really clear and coherent governance. And so revisiting the collective impact model to validate that choice of model or make updates where needed. And ensure that all of the partners in HSBC understand the governance structure, including roles, responsibilities, expectations. And most importantly, so that everyone knows. How disputes might be resolved and how their voice is important and, and, and has a role. Next slide, please. So our final recommendation, it's similar to what it sounds like the city is already doing. Is to take an opportunity to create a shared vision for HSBC. And something that's shared with all of its partners that can be used to guide efforts throughout the cities, the system. This one was drawn largely from qualitative input and particularly from service providers identifying, identifying a desire for a clear and shared vision. Of rallying call, as it were, in order to keep making progress and moving forward. So for my final slide. As I mentioned at the top, HSBC is clearly committed to doing this work in the best and most sort of evidence-based way possible. And we recommend continuing that commitment. What we have tried to highlight here and through the report. Are the opportunities to do more and better and to reinvigorate the collaborative to really keep. The energy up. We also, as I mentioned at sort of the beginning of this presentation in the framing slide. HSBC is sort of a novel approach to collaboration that gets below the COC level, allowing for more. Sort of local tailoring, but also bringing local entities together. There isn't a lot of this in the evidence base and it would be interesting to put it out there. So. uh, those are my concluding thoughts and um I really appreciate you all um taking me as I am a little bit uh less fluid and perfect than I I might have been, um, you know, five hours ago. So thank you so much and I welcome your questions and feedback.
Well, thank you, Meg. I actually thought it was perfect. We just need to look at the question. Can you? So let's see here. Is there? Do we have the slide with the uh the question?
We put it in chat for you if you'd like.
Okay. Does council have questions and feedback or feedback? Whoops, I just, I wanted to read it for the folks listening. They don't see it. Where'd it go here? Does council have questions or feedback on the areas of recommendation from the evaluation? So for this one, I suggest we do questions first and then um once we're done with questions, then we will go and do feedback. A reminder, there will be one more uh presentation after this one. So, questions? All right, let me look to my screen here. I think Nicole, you were you first, Nicole? Yeah, okay, Nicole, thanks.
Uh, thanks for the presentation. Um, so my my question is really around um kind of the the areas of recommendation here, right? They are, um, this is a large group with a diverse um cities. We got some commissioners, staff, everybody in there. I mean, the to what degree can of can we implement some of these recommendations, given that there's a lot more people that need to get buy-in to all these things? So I guess I'm sort of just wondering, you know, what the um what the what the commitment is for um implementing some of the recommendations at that uh regional level.
Um, well, I'll I'll speak to that first. Um, uh, we may, one of our county uh colleagues may also want to jump in for some of these questions as they, as they think that they can add value there. I think some of the, some of the recommendations um are, I'll call them no cost uh recommendations like things around governance, communication. And um those are areas, some of which we've already uh begun to explore. Where we'll look forward in this next section around strategy, I think it will be very important. Um, because we're in a, we're in a constrained environment financially. And as you noted um, a few minutes ago, um, it could be even more challenging than that. So understanding how we set a strategy um for improvement um with uh um with with those uh resource constraints will be important. The um, we'll, we'll, again, we'll get into this in our next section, but I think some of the um, um, the the modeling and evaluation of some of the things we're doing will also flow into our our strategy conversation. And I I think there also is work, which is hopefully no cost work of how we collaborate better together, particularly over this last year. Um, with um at times challenges and stress with having um different community partners involved and um, you know, different leadership levels involved as well. Um, so that's, I think that's how I would see it at this point.
Thank you. Um, can I, may may I restate and just, you can just tell me yes or no? That's it. Um, it sounds like for the things that are no cost, um, it will be fairly easy to kind of implement those areas of recommendation and the places where we may get tripped up and there may be some differences would be um where their costs attached to the recommendations. Is that a fair summary?
Uh, yes, I think so. And then as resources are tight, we'll have to evaluate like which programs are doing well and which are not, and if there need to be changes there as well.
Continuing with questions, Matt and then Tina.
Thanks, Ryan. Um, you got it. I got it. Actually, a few here. Um, my first one really comes off one of the earlier slides. Um, it was sort of talking about the qualitative analysis and saying that um there were interviews with governing bodies. Um, I would consider this a governing body and I'm not sure council was uh brought into this at all. And so I just was just a little curious if that's Meg or folks from the county. How how do we reconcile the input from the one of the, if might be the largest funder of homelessness outreach and services in the region uh not being consultant because we set policy and budget for those things. I just want to know a little bit about why or how that might have been missed.
I uh don't know the answer to that unfortunately, but I do know that um uh, to our understanding, the city of Boulder was included in that through um uh Devon Kissick and uh a few other, uh, let's see Kurt Fernhaver and, well, Kurt, duh, sorry. And Vicky, who's also, who's also helped uh at different moments. And so um there were, but you're right, I don't know the answer to why council wasn't. And so I um uh, can only speak to unfortunately, the those interviews also took place before I took over as project manager for this. So I can't tell you the thinking behind it, but we collaborated every one of our client meetings, we worked with um both HSBC sort of representatives from the county level, but also Megan and other members from sort of representatives from the city of Longmont. And so I know it was a collaborative decision.
I I can appreciate the that response. I mean, certainly working with staff, there are boots on the ground, but they're executing the policy with the resources we provide them. So um, thinking about how we evaluate it, uh, it it does give me a little pause on how we got to some of these recommendations when the varying governing bodies that set that policy and thus budgets were not consulted. So I'll I'll just leave that there. I made my point. The um, I'll get to comments in a little bit. I I guess I have a question for the county. Um does the county accept these recommendations? Just sort of curious if if that's the case.
Uh, hi, Council, Susanna Lucas Baker, uh Boulder County Housing Department Director. Um, thanks for having us tonight. Um, yeah, I mean, the county appreciates the work that Meg did. We were briefed on this last month, so it's new information for us too. We'll continue to talk about it at HSBC, but we're supportive of it. I think like the evaluation showed, we're really collaborative and we are committed to that collaboration. We have a really good working history with the city of Boulder, so we're excited about being able to implement this. Some of those changes are already underway. I mean, I think I'm excited to be able to bring more later this year to you in terms of some of the things that we'll be able to do, especially those no cost items.
Well, yes, we we always love no cost items.
We do.
This is a, this is a problem that requires immense cost. So um, I guess my follow-up question would be um, one, how do we go about prioritizing these recommendations? And and then furthermore, I would say there's two in specific that I would say uh require perhaps some reconciliation. Um, and that is specifically that, you know, there's a recommendation to ensure funding for PSH housing. Um, and this and seek out opportunities to leverage collaborative and operate efficiently. You know, that sounds lovely, but yet we have this one B funding to which the city is prohibited from using its allocation for PSH. So so we have policy being set and yet recommendations that are in co- conflict with such policy. So I'm wondering how we go about reconciling that. Uh, we also have the issue of the county cutting four million dollars from its critical service support grants while also having a recommendation that says you need to put resources into those very things. So I'm just wondering how the city has a seat at the table to reconcile these policy conflicts with the recommendations that are in front of us.
Yeah, thank you. So I think just to clarify on the one B funding, uh, you're not prohibited from using it for development work. So if you would like to build and put that into capital dollars for PSH, great, you are, you are completely able to do that. Um, it is limiting, however, on the supportive services dollars and I I would just want to recognize that. Um, and then as far as other other cuts, I'm representing the housing department, so I can only speak to our department. We are not making any cuts to the system. Um, but other departments I can't speak for.
I I appreciate it. And at the end of the day, I think this is the crux of it. You're not the policy setter, and so I don't want to point at that directly. I appreciate the work you this is a conversation between the policy setters and those that set budget, which is our, you know, counterpart uh as the commissioners at the county. So but but I pose these questions for community and for audiences to hear that that we have intrinsic conflicts um that need to be reconciled. And so um, uh, there are a slurry other and I'll maybe save some more comments and let my colleagues um answer uh or ask some questions, but uh, th- there is um a lot left to be determined in this process. So, but thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, thanks. And I just want to add one quick thing. Um, our team is has not taken this to our county commissioners yet, but we have it scheduled for March.
Okay, uh, next to Tina, the questions.
Hi, um, thank you for, oops, wait, yep, I'm on.
Oh, you're good. You're good.
Thank you for joining us.
I saw that happen. Go ahead, sorry.
Um, I just had a question about the public education recommendation and um, one of the the conversations we have in our community is concerns, um, understanding that homelessness is a status that's not um, that is not criminal in of itself, but sometimes we see behaviors that the community is concerned about. And with the public education piece, do you have examples of a public education campaign that addressed both the concerns around behaviors that were difficult for, you know, shop owners, store owners, uh, but also created the human side of the homeless community? Um, and 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 just sort of the the recommendation felt a little bit. Um, I'm concerned it doesn't address some of the concerns the community has that I I feel are legitimate as well.
I think that's fair. Um, the piece uh I don't have an example off the top of my head, uh, but one thing I I I will say is that the goal, I think, is less to assuage concerns and more to help people understand that whatever behavior you're seeing is because that person doesn't have a home to go do that behavior in. Um, and so uh it there is a lot to be said for, I think, the humanizing piece of like, anyone could become homeless and the experience of being homeless means that you have every one of your worst days in public.
Okay, thank you. I'm good.
Okay, any more questions before we go to feedback? Going once, going twice. Okay, feedback. Does anybody have any feedback? Mark, you're up.
Thank you very much. Um, I I want to start by saying, um I endorse every word that my colleague Matt Benjamin uh uttered on this subject. Um, I I think there are some major issues out there uh that have not been adequately resolved uh and that we have interests uh that are in contrast um to the county's interest. Uh, I also want to um en- endorse um what my colleague, uh, council, uh, member Marcus said uh in terms of public education um surrounding homelessness uh and and dealing with hatred of homeless. My my lived experience as a member of this body uh is that most people do not hate the homeless. They do have great hostility towards antisocial and criminal behavior. Um, they are hostile to the loss of Boulder Creek Path as an amenity for all citizens. Um, but it it's not the homeless that they hate, and that's not something that's going to be cured by public education. It's going to be cured by effective governmental policies that bring Boulder Creek Path back into a condition where people can comfortably bike it and walk it. Um, and frankly, if there's, if there is hostility, there's a good deal of hostility to governing bodies such as this one. Um, we may not be capable of solving homelessness, but it is certainly anticipated that we would do, that we would be more effective than we are. So I I I think this whole concept of uh public education to bring people around to a more benign view of of the homeless is both unnecessary and frankly, I I think it's a little condescending. I think people understand um what homelessness is about. Um, what they, what they dislike uh and are opposed to is the kind of behaviors that make it impossible to go down to the mall um and and recreate peacefully. Um, so I I I just, you know, I I read that and I I just don't think that's an appropriate uh methodology for bringing people around. I think what brings people around are policies that uh better affect their lives and create better conditions for them as well as for the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Matt.
Well, I think uh, I'll I'll reciprocate the praise. I think uh Mark and certainly Tina a- addressed that issue with the public education side quite clearly. I I've done uh, I spent a, I spent a decade doing public form uh formative and and summative assessment for various programs educationally and for scientific programs. Uh, I I'm, I I've had, Meg, I, you know, I I struggle with with the uh validity of this assessment. I I had, I'm just sorry, I just, I struggle with it because it lacks um quantitative depth and we are in the midst of a crisis and we need every layer of the onion peeled back um in order for us to really dive in in a resource-constrained environment to put every penny where it has greatest impact. And I, and I, I can't look at that rec- these recommendations and go, I, yeah, I know, I know how to do that now. I have more understanding of our situation than I did prior and and I can't say that. So I I'm I'm struggling with where to go. I think it's also case why we're also doing our own consulting. And I think it's it's also proof that we, and and this isn't towards you, Meg, but and and the work that your your team has done, but the tension between us and the county couldn't be any more evident in regards to how this has uh been brought forth because the expectations with this evaluation was either by accident or by intention to leave out the very governing body that is is key here and some of our partners. I'll say like even the Boulder Chamber was left out and other major stakeholders that have skin in the game here with both resources and impact were not brought into to the conversation. And so I that that's hard for me um in a lot of ways. So um I appreciate the work and I appreciate what that brings to us a little bit, but but I'm 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 craving so much more depth and and deep understanding in order to feel like as a policymaker, I've got something to 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 act on. And I can go back to community and say, yeah, I know more about the direction we need to take ourselves. Um, and I and I'm struggling with that a lot here. So um, but I but I appreciate the effort that's gone in and I and I think we can use some pieces where where applicable going forward. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Taysha and then Tara.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and um, one, thank you all for the effort of putting these pieces together. Um, I was really excited about this particular session. Um, because last year when I was fresh and new, I, we had something similar and um when I asked both individually with our directors as well as when we had our uh study session last year, um, I explicitly, you know, asked about, you know, program by program performance over year, you know, over multiple years or as much data that we had quantitatively. Um, you know, coupled with performance and and outcome data and um a year later and I'm still asking for the same things. Um, you know, we know that we are in a fiscally restraint um situation. And so really having, you know, performance data that is qualitative and quantitative on all the programs that we offer is really, really key at this point. Um, and so I'm just, um, and which is why in the uh I made a request for the council agenda committee to, you know, get more information about our research agenda um for the city and more information about the evaluations that are currently in process because what a a pattern I'm seeing is, um, you know, we'll ask a a, you know, a research question and and, you know, be told, okay, just wait. Oh, we're researching that. Uh, um, wait and we'll get the information. And then when we get it, it's it's not quite at the grain size um to to really make the decisions that we need to make. And so um, I look forward to the addition of the of the new um, research project, but at the end of the day, um, you know, both the one year of data from the previous research project and then this data, which is more global. Um, still, I I'm just concerned about how much money, time and effort was spent. I'm concerned around data collection and repeated data collection requests um from the same groups of people. Um, and um yeah, so I'm 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 looking forward to the new one, but I'm concerned about waiting another nine months. yeah, so I'm 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 looking forward to the new one, but I'm concerned about waiting another nine months to get information that we're gonna need to activate on in the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you, Taisha. Tara.
I guess segueing off to that comment, after, I don't think it was like twenty-two slides, twenty-five slides. I guess my question is, what do we now know that we, I didn't know yesterday? I can't honestly think of anything. It wasn't very detailed and how does this help us? But I'm not saying that as a, I actually would want to know if you would just take all those slides. Like, what are your five points of what you're really trying to say would be helpful to me? So if you can answer that, and I don't mean it in a mean way, you know, that that would be good for me to know. So that is my question. What as opposed to a lot of words, I like succinct things. So just tell me what do you think this council didn't know yesterday that you're now telling us today in a very short paragraph?
I I think we're on, we're on feedback, but Meg, I I don't know if you're, I know there's a lot coming at you. If you, if you feel inclined to um, to take that, I think the floor is yours. However, you want to, go ahead.
That is my combination feedback and question.
I don't uh, have a better answer for you because this is not a two bullet point, say it in a paragraph kind of problem. This is not a problem that there is effective data that you can do KPIs the way you can in other areas. This is just not that type of problem. I would highly recommend that you read the full report for the details. And and also, the climate of this meeting is indicative of the challenges around collaboration when that is one of the most important parts of solving this problem. Open and effective collaboration.
Thank you, Megan. Tara, anything else?
Actually, Margaret, not Megan, but thank you, Ryan.
Sorry?
It's actually Margaret, not Megan.
I'm sorry, I'm reading, I'm just reading what's on the screen. It says, Meg, I'm so sorry.
No problem. It's been happening to me since I was six years old. I appreciate it.
Tara, anything else from your side? Okay, um, it looks like that might be it for feedback. Is there anything else going once, going twice? Okay, Margaret, thank you for being with us and for the presentation. Um, Kurt, I think I will give it back to you um, for our third and final presentation.
Ryan, thank you very much.
Oh, can I just interrupt for a second? I want to apologize if I sounded mean. I did not mean to be mean. And I do want to collaborate. I guess there's just a level of frustration that has really nothing to do with you. Because it's a big problem and everybody wants to help solve it. And so yeah, so, you know, I never met you before. Please don't take it personally and
I won't, and I don't. It's clear.
Frustration, that's all.
Yeah, there's clearly frustration and not a lot of trust happening right now, and that's okay. But I really do appreciate the feedback and I understand that this isn't what you needed right now. Um, but I hope that at some point, some parts of it will be of value. Thank you for your, for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thanks, thanks a lot, Margaret. We appreciate it.
Say something real quick?
Okay, Lauren, please. Yes, go ahead.
Sorry, I had to jump to my phone.
Give you a minute. I can see there's something going on on Lauren's screen. Give her just a minute. Maybe.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, Lauren, go ahead.
Thanks. Um, so I just wanted to appreciate the report and the findings. I do think you know, the challenging part will be finding ways to implement them. Um, but I, I do hope that um, we can implement especially the no cost changes, um, but also look at ways to maintain what we have and find ways to build our programs as was outlined in this report. And I also did appreciate the recommendation around um, kind of thinking about what the overall kind of some of the animosity around people who are homeless in our community. I mean, I I understand what other council members are saying and I also have seen that animosity um, play out in ways that are, that it can be pretty negative. Um, so I I think just airing that out and having communication around it is important. Um, Susan, I hope, or Susannah, I'm sorry, I can't see the names and I forgot. Um, but I hope that you will pass along our council's frustration around being prohibited from using the 1B funding for um, the supportive services component of supportive services um, developments because that is one of the, for us, one of the hardest pieces of the funding puzzle to come up with. And one of the things that we were really hopeful that we would be able to do around this funding. Um, if there was any chance to revisit it, I know we would be really grateful. Um, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Can I say one more thing, Ryan? I'm so sorry. I neglected to say it. I meant to at the beginning, but you as a council have some fabulous staff who I have had the true pleasure of getting to work with throughout this project and I just wanted to send some gratitude to Megan and Kurt and the other members of your team and Susannah, also your team. So thank you all. And and with that, I really appreciate the feedback. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Kurt, I think I will hand the baton back to you, uh, to do what's next.
Yeah, and so, um, I'm gonna hand it over to Mark Wolf and I believe that he'll probably want the slides back up as well. Thanks, Kurt. Ta- Taisha, did you have something before I just saw you?
Um, I appreciate that. I'm not sure if I can wait until, I I think the question may be applicable to this section as well. So I'll just make a note and come back during uh, question time. Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Good evening, council. Uh, I'm Mark Wolf, Assistant City Manager. Uh, I'm excited to help shift gears this evening and uh, discuss the important work ahead in updating our twenty seventeen homelessness strategy. This directly addresses a part of the key council priority for twenty-four and twenty-five to review and update the homelessness strategy. Uh, while we've seen tremendous success over the past eight years, examples of which you've heard tonight, we recognize the need to continue to adapt. The landscape has significantly changed over those eight years. We had a global pandemic. Uh, we have seen the the rise of uh, opiate abuse, including fentanyl in our community and the continued strains on our mental health and substance abuse systems. This asks us to lean into what we do well, but also evolve our programs and and investments to meet the moment. Just as in twenty sixteen, when Boulder led in developing a regional strategy to address this regional and national problem, we aim to do so again in twenty twenty-five. To accelerate those crucial work, we've engaged with Clutch Consulting. Clutch specializes in transforming homelessness systems across the United States. Working with cities like Denver, Dallas, Los Angeles, Cleveland and Austin, Texas. You'll meet one of their founders, Mandy Chapman-Simple, in a moment. Clutch has achieved significant reductions in homelessness in these communities through system transformation, strategic redesign and implementation. This isn't another analysis. Rather, this is a system modeling approach to maximize the impact of our investments toward our city and regional goals. Critically, we do envision this as a regional document. Clutch will help us with role clarity to help determine the most effective investments for Boulder and our partners, including the county. Their expertise will be invaluable as we head into the next eight years. And for council members tonight, this is the beginning of the conversation with you. You will have upcoming time with Clutch to share your uh, thoughts more specifically. Uh, additionally, Clutch will be hosting time with key organizational partners and individuals with lived experience to better inform the strategy update. Tonight, it will be helpful to hear your expectations and suggestions heading into the bulk of the work. So with that, I am happy to introduce Mandy, who will share more about their approach and what we can expect in the coming months.
Thank you, Mark, and uh, thank you for for having me join the meeting today. It's wonderful to meet all of you and I look forward to um, some, some in-person time when we're there in um, just a couple of weeks. So, uh, I I'm going to be brief tonight in giving you an overview of our overall engagement, the timeline and some of the the techniques that we're going to use um, to give you a sense of what you can expect and and certainly am prepared to answer your questions um, about what this process will look like, what we can expect um, uh, in terms of a product or deliverable. Um, and and any other suggestions you have um, about how to strengthen um, the engagement within the community on this issue. Next slide, please. So to give you an overview of the overall plan, um, we've prepared this slide. And I I I think basically the engagement breaks into four pieces. So we started in in January and uh, with some preliminary review of all of the documents, including this HSBC evaluation. Um, and we've started uh, gathering the data that we need in order to uh, perform a system modeling and some gap projections. So all of this document review will lead us into the second phase of of this activity, which will take place between February and April, where we will work to uh, engage a variety of stakeholders. We do this in very intentional ways. We host design work sessions. And and what we're really focused on is looking forward, not necessarily backwards. We're gonna use modeling and uh, system modeling and and some um, predictive analytics that are gonna help us understand what it will take to get to the system that we all desire, which is what will position all of you to make really stra- strategic decisions about um, what are the most kind of high impact investments? And equally, what are the partnerships that are gonna be required across the region in order to both fund and implement these activities? So we certainly um, will engage with providers, individuals with lived experience of homelessness, but also a wide array of stakeholders because the balance of this isn't just about responding to homelessness, but it's equally, and I think we've heard it throughout the presentation tonight, about, you know, an effective um, management of shared public spaces and and finding the balance in our response. Um, and so, so that will really be embedded within the system modeling exercises as well. By April, um, we plan to um, have a strategy update to uh, provide internally. Um, this is going to be kind of a preliminary vision, guiding principles, goals and strategies. Um, and it will really serve as the framework for the overall strategy update. We'll, you know, we'll be back engaging with staff. Um, more opportunities to engage with council and other stakeholders. Um, and what we'll work to do is is really finalize that updated strategy or and really the framework of that strategy by by May. The reason that's important is that we equally want to test these strategies through the the feasibility of some implementation planning. And so between May and July, we will be engaging uh, again, a variety of stakeholders, but at at various levels relative to the you know, the the practicality of implementation. So this is really digging deeper into um, how our practices, how how are things actually being practiced in the field today as opposed to potentially the policies that we have in place? Um, and certainly against the goals or the vision of where we want to get to. And so we'll work that process um, in order to to, in essence, test those strategies. We'll do some refinement of that. We'll equally prepare an implementation plan that accompanies this new strategic framework. Um, and then uh, we'll, we'll actually help begin preparing for that implementation. You know, those first priority activities and equally be providing um, more detail around an evaluation framework that should be implemented, you know, both a continuous improvement process, but also digging deeper into the structural needs that you'll have related to governance and in active management um, and implementation support that's going to be required um, to to perform that continuous evaluation, but equally to have confidence in the data and the metrics um, that are being reported back on the overall um, success of the implementation of these initiatives and um, of the particular goals uh, within the plan. Next slide, please. So rooted in this approach um, is is really a sense of systems. Um, so so Clutch really organizes around this notion that um, we are, the 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 homeless response is not just about a collection of components, but really about how we put those components together to produce a particular pattern of behavior and a set of results. And so in order to understand how each component needs to function, the scale of each of of each of those components, how those those components need to interact, we have to look more holistically. We have to examine all of the parts and how those parts interface and influence one another. So we're gonna be focused on those interconnections, which is also um, uh, you know, at the policymaking level all the way down um, to deep in the field, you know, how the outreach workers are actually engaging and whether that engagement kind of is consistent enough in order to produce the result we're looking for. So it includes resource and alignment. We're really looking for high impact solutions. Um, we're looking for for solutions that produce long-term impact. And and all of this approach is really about um, working to avoid distractions. So, you know, you, as policymakers, you can appreciate, it's very complicated to try to meet the expectations of both you know, effective management of shared public spaces and, you know, an a a an empathetic response to individuals who are in real crisis. And and so the the work of this systems-based approach is to find that balance, to avoid um, any unintended consequences and to really avoid low impact investments um, that that you know, might look shiny and good, but actually aren't producing the results that anyone is looking for. Next slide, please. Um, I referenced this earlier. Um, we use some advanced system modeling techniques that help us reveal these high impact strategies. In essence, what we're doing is looking um, at a flow analysis, you know, what's the inflow, what's the demand for homeless response services? And what is the capacity to produce those services and are those two things in balance? Um, and then what we'll able, we're able to do with this advanced system modeling is look, is is perform some predictive analytics to consider scenarios of, you know, how might different investments impact our ability to uh, bring these, the the inflow and the outflow into balance. So it's going to be looking at how do we reduce inflow and equally, how do we um, increase that capacity to produce the exits. And obviously, this is then married with um, deeper analysis, that deeper analysis about how all of these parts have to interconnect and perform together um, in in order to produce the results that are being modeled for. So you can see, we'll, it's it's just another dimension to this analysis. Next slide, please. And finally, yeah, I just want to reiterate that our focus in all of this is really about meeting the moment. The the goal here is to build the will and momentum to achieve the collective impact. And that it really is going to start with a shared vision. Um, and and so we need to to, you know, engage all of those partners um, to do that. But but equally, we also see the importance of the city leading in this space. Be- because of the history, um, but also because of some of the outsized responsibility that that cities and, you know, um, downtowns in particular really tend to carry on this issue. Um, and so with with that shared vision in mind, it allows everyone to come together and align holding all of the the respective values, um, including the value of urgency, transparency, empathy and adaptability. I think each of these things can come together. Um, and and the goal of the final strategy document is to reflect those values um, and and the a balanced approach that um, serves the needs of the entire community. Those who are experiencing homelessness and are unhoused now and and in the future, but also others in the community who are equally trying to um, enjoy those shared public spaces, um, participate in community with others. Um, a- and so the the shared vision really aims to to find that sweet spot in in all of this. So with that, that is an overview of of the way we approach this work and of the potential timeline here. So um, by July, we will complete this process, but um, all all along the way, we'll be able to provide uh, updates um, on how all of these activities are are on how all of these activities are synthesizing and how the work is building toward this final shared vision and a more comprehensive plan, including opportunities for, you know, reevaluation of investments if necessary. So with that, I'll open it back to any questions.
Okay, why don't we do the, we'll do questions first? We'll clarify questions first and then we can do feedback. So let me pull up the list here. I think Tina was first. Does that seem right, Tina? Okay, questions to Tina.
From Tina, okay. Yes, thank you for that presentation and for already spending time getting to know our community. Appreciate it and look forward to meeting you at the, I think you're having an open house on Monday. And or sometime like that. The one question I have might really be for staff is how is the, how are some of the deliverables of this report aligned with our budget process? In case we want to make some modifications for that.
Yeah, that's a really good question, Tina. It will be fairly lined up. I think we'll have some good insights from Clutch in that June-July window. We want to make sure we're building in time with council to kind of confirm the direction and the strategy. But if we do have that, if we hit our target in that June-July window, that will be before we finish the development of the city manager recommended budget, which would come to you in September. So it's a little bit late for us in the budget process, but it is workable to plan ahead for the 2026 budget.
Okay, thanks.
Is that it, Tina? Okay, Mark.
Forgive me if this information has been provided to us previously. I just don't recall where it might be. Can you give us a little background about Clutch? And what jurisdictions you've worked in and what kind of results you have achieved previously? And again, if all of that has been provided to us, just let me know and I'll show the question.
Well, I'm happy to provide a little bit of insight in my background and where we've worked. I also encourage you to visit our website, clutchconsultinggroup.com. And it provides a pretty thorough assessment of that. You know, I am based in Houston and previously was special advisor to the mayor for homeless initiatives in Houston, was the architect of Houston's large system transformation, the 60% reduction in homelessness there. And so this was between, you know, 2012 and 2016. And so since then have been out consulting in communities across the country. So with other mayors, with other governors and working to support those communities in transforming their systems holistically as we did in Houston or, you know, in more targeted ways in particular cases. So we've been working in Dallas for the last four years. We've seen, you know, dramatic reductions there, 24% reduction in unsheltered homelessness in three years. They're at their lowest rate of homelessness in the last five years. We're in New Orleans and we are working and coming very close here to eliminating unsheltered homelessness in this community and working to sustain that. We've equally helped Cleveland execute on a direct-to-housing encampment decommissioning model that's allowed them to, they're closing in on the elimination of unsheltered homelessness as well. We've worked in communities like Los Angeles. Obviously, that is a much larger beast to tame, you know, but helped them begin to implement some strategies. And believe it or not, they last year had a very small reduction in homelessness and a couple percentage points reduction in unsheltered homelessness, which, you know, reversed a trajectory that had been going up for several years. So we're really proud of them as well and all of the work that they are doing. That's just a few examples. You know, we are currently in Denver, helping them stand up their Housing Central Command structure so that they can effectively rehouse everyone out of the non-congregate shelters so that they can continue to reduce homelessness. We're running similar predictive analytics for them because they're interested in getting to an end to street homelessness as well. So this is really our background. We're a small but mighty team and we are excited to be supporting the city of Boulder, but the whole subregion that really does seem to be working together. And, you know, I appreciate the tensions. Having worked in government, I, you know, have navigated many of those. And I think these types of processes are a wonderful opportunity to really kind of air all of those concerns and make some real decisions about what we want to accomplish together and how to do it.
Well, that is a very substantial background. Thank you for providing me the information. Can we go back to the slide that was, I guess, page 33 in the presentation? It was the process. It was the four-part process of how we're going to proceed. It was unclear to me. No, it's that 37, 36. One more. There we go. Are the specific policy recommendations going to be coming from Clutch? Or are they going to be coming from our staff? What's the, what's the operating procedure there?
Let me try to answer first from my perspective of the scope of work. And then I think Mark probably can round that out. You know, so I think Clutch is responsible for leading on this process. Clutch is responsible for, you know, performing the analytics, synthesizing all of the conversations and data points and work sessions and providing that framework. We obviously are going to be working internally with staff to refine that framework and would lean on Mark and the city manager's office to guide how we bring those updates back to council, you know, for continued refinement in that process.
Okay, thank you. Those are all my questions and those are very good answers. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, Nicole fell off and she's back on. I don't know if she was, was she next, Erin, or were you next? Do you know? I think it might have been Nicole.
Either way, Nicole, you want to go?
Sure, yeah, I just have a quick question because my other question is sort of a question comment. So I'll save that one for comments. And thanks so much for the presentation. What I'm wondering about is, you know, as we're doing this work this spring and summer, we're kind of building a strategy on shifting sand with the sort of daily changes that we are seeing. And so my question is around how is the process going to deal with that? Because it is, it's, they're interrelated, right? So just curious what the plan is for how to address that.
I can jump in with kind of my national hat on because this is not a locally unique circumstance, right? This is everywhere. I mean, I think the cold, hard truth in all of this is that the federal government provides, you know, the bulk of the kind of, they provide the base for our homeless response system. And it would be nearly impossible in most communities to replace those resources at a local level if those resources were to be removed. So in some ways, if the most extreme actions resolve, it is catastrophic. And you're absolutely right. I think the way we are proceeding in this moment in most places across the country is we're going to continue to plan as if those resources are intact. What we will, what we will be cautious on is any sense that those resources will grow. Historically, you could count on the growth of those resources year over year. And what's possible is that those resources will become a bit more stagnant. And so we'll build that into the model itself. But I, you know, we will, on a case-by-case basis, you know, make other adjustments. But there just isn't a great contingency option here. You know, unless there's, you know, real interest in, you know, putting a lot of tax, you know, making a lot more taxpayer resource available at a local level. And that just doesn't feel like a realistic immediate solution to bake into a strategy. So I don't know that that's a great answer, but it's an honest one.
And maybe I'll add too, and certainly Kurt may want to add to this, but I'll say that that's a reality even before the current reality that we find ourselves in, right? Like, there has always been a lack of funding in this particular area. And so we will be thoughtful about that as we move forward. The group that continues to look at what impacts we may have in our funding will continue to look at that. We are hopeful that conversations about funding that directly impacts individuals will continue to remain, but in everything that we do, we will be looking at it. But we start, I would say, at the outset with a deficit built in because this area of work has never been fully funded, as we know, because we would not be in the situation we are in nationally had attention and resources been devoted to this kind of thing. And so my little commentary to the world, but we will be thoughtful and thinking about that as we move forward.
Thank you, and I very much appreciate the honesty. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Okay, Erin and then Taysha.
So Mandy, thanks so much for joining us this evening. And I really appreciated your presentation. I was ready to jump up for a standing ovation, honestly, after I heard it. Like, that sounds so much like what we need here for our next steps with our homeless strategy. So very excited to have you onboard. I'll have a comment or two, but my one question gets to the budget question again. People ask how this will integrate with our budget and those sorts of things. Obviously, there are things that we would like to do and things that you might recommend that we would do that are beyond our, you know, financial wherewithal. And so if you can just talk a little bit about how you'll balance that question of like, here are some bigger moves that would be fantastic if you could afford them. Here are things that I'm pretty sure you can afford, so definitely do those. You know, what's that kind of balance in terms of the fiscal feasibility? And I'll add to fiscal feasibility, like implementatability from a workforce standpoint. Because that's, I would say, after finances, I'd say workforce might be our biggest constraint. So your thoughts on how you blend those kind of constraints together?
I love this question. So appreciate it. Yeah, I think this is why we never want to present a strategic framework without some of that complementary implementation planning that's associated with it. Because, you know, it's rare that we can get there all at once overnight. And so that implementation planning has to really consider, what are the kind of phased implementation activities? And how do, like, what's the right order and what should be the priority for our investments in order to move us toward our larger strategic vision, but also meet our more immediate objectives along the way? And that's usually the balance that we're trying to strike. And I'll just be really practical and give you an example. You know, when we started this work in Houston, you know, now over, you know, almost 15 years ago, the streets were very different, believe it or not. We had 4,800 people sleeping on the streets on any given night in Houston, but you didn't know it in the same way that you might know that there's 1,000 right now. And so it afforded us, you know, a different set of priorities. It was a different runway. We phased our implementation differently. Whereas now, right, that concern about the way public spaces are being utilized and the difficulty of managing those shared public spaces, it just demands a different set of priorities. And so we would, you know, community by community, we're going to contemplate, you know, all of those conditions with the community and make some recommendations about how to implement, which equally takes into consideration, what's the bite? The reasonable bite that you all can take on this issue, given the resources that could be available. So it's built in into that. We want to give you the big picture. Those numbers can be really scary. So we equally want to chunk it and say, but we think you can, you know, if we're going to climb Everest, like, let's focus on just getting to base camp first, right? And then to the next summit and the next.
Thanks for that. And it's good to hear that you're thinking about approaches that are tailored to the reality of homelessness as it exists and impacts our community today. So glad to hear that. Thanks so much. That's all I got.
Okay, continuing with questions. Got Taysha, then Matt, then Lauren.
Thank you so much. So I appreciate the timeline that has been presented. I do have some concerns around not having quantitative data on all of the programs that we operate in advance for robust conversations around our budget. So I'm just curious, although I appreciate a robust community outreach, I still feel like there's a need to fill in the environmental scan or landscape of just the performance data of where we've been. You know, so yes, I'm wondering if there can be a phased approach where some data components can be released instead of waiting till the very end, considering that we're going to need to make some very robust decisions around our budget and not having quantitative data. We have so much qualitative data. I'm more interested in the quantitative data, the performance data, and the financial data of the 25 programs that we're currently operating. And so my question is, is there an opportunity to do a phased approach? That's one question. Another question that I have is around an issue that we haven't talked about today, and that is those individuals that are using a multiple programs. And so I was also curious in if, whether in this work, we are considering some kind of mechanism that will allow for a unique identifier that will allow us to actually track individuals? Because again, one of my other concerns are the significantly different demographics of solo, unhoused versus family unhoused. And so I would love to get some more information around that. But again, understand, because I've asked for this information last year and was told that currently they're not tracking that. But I'm just curious if there would be an opportunity to track that. So those are the two prominent questions that I have at the moment. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to start with that, Taysha. So if we're able to provide some data, and I appreciate that that may be limited in the types of, the type of information looking for with our existing programs, we're happy to provide that. And some of the information was provided in this packet is closing out, looking at 2024 information. I will say that, and I hate to put Mandy on the spot, but one of the things that both PPA and Mandy has talked with us about is the limitations in our data and some of the difficulty and really being able to do some of that deep analysis that you're getting at. And so I'm wondering, Mandy, if you might be able to speak a little bit to kind of how you're thinking about data and some of the conversations, maybe some insights into some of those conversations that I know you've had already in our region, but might be helpful in letting council in on some of those conversations.
Yeah, I mean, I want to appreciate your frustration here. And, you know, one of the things that the HSBC evaluation does kind of clearly point out is that when you have, you know, so the primary data system that homeless response systems typically use is the homeless management information system. Your region is a bit unique because your continuum of care that operates that HMIS system is very large. And so I think there is oftentimes a desire to have more local control over that data. And so by developing a local data system, you end up with parts of the data in two different systems that don't speak to each other. So we, you are not the only place where this happens. And so luckily, there are ways that we can work through that from our process. We're first going to be looking at the system and how people move through that system. And so there is, there are some great data tools that are available that will allow us to do that. And that is all of the performance data about how the individual moves through that system and whether that was successful or not is baked into that, which is really great. What it's not going to tell us in that first analysis is, did this program? did this program create the most impact or did this program create the most impact, right? So we're we're gonna back our way into that over time. Um but we're gonna start with that big picture Zoom, and and I think I we feel confident that that the data that's available to us is gonna let that happen. What's nice about your local data system is I think it's gonna let us get deep, do that deeper dive. And it might be that we don't get it all done in this round, but it becomes part of the strategic framework. So it becomes part of how you do business going forward. Um that that, you know, without knowing, I'm and I'm so new into this process in your community without, I don't want to to get over my skis here, but but my instincts tell me that's probably um wh- where we'll land in all of this. Um and I think we can bring you that data as we uncover it, right? And 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 we can, because this is all about building toward that that strategic understanding and and we we can do that transparently together.
Mm hmm. Okay, um I just wanted to also honor that I did meet with Elizabeth and Kurt when I first came on a year and a half ago and had them walk through and and was informed about these issues around data quality. However, there I was also told that they were diff- there was different data points uh available for the different programs, and they report annually on that. So I'm actually asking for a compilation of ex- of accident data that is already available. Um I'm not asking for anything that doesn't currently exist, but I am continuously asking for data in a format that we can actually make a decision with. Um so I'm grateful to hear that um that some of the qualitative quantitative, excuse me, data will be available um, you know, um at an iterative pers- uh place. And if anything, I would be eager um to get more um shared accountability around when we can anticipate that. Because if we don't get this data before we have to make budget decisions, then unfortunately, I'm very, very concerned about us making decisions off of the information that we currently have. Thank you.
Okay, I so like that's it for Taysha. So uh questions on to Matt.
Thanks, Ryan. Uh I got a couple of questions. Uh first, uh Mandy, thank you for being here. Um and also, I just want to recognize um, you know, uh I have tremendous amount of hope based on the work that I see that you've done and and accomplished uh across the country. Um and so I just, I'm I'm looking forward to it, and I appreciate what you said about how how we're getting into the the pieces um from from a systems process, and that that's a new way of thinking for us. And so I'm really uh looking forward to that. Um um one of my two questions centers around, you know, stakeholder engagement. As you saw sort of previously, that was something that we were a little frustrated with before is it's hard to get a clear picture if we don't have the voices. Um we don't have those perspectives at the table. And I know that this is starting holistically as a city one, but we can't have a city strategy without it being either linked or knowing very clearly the gaps with the county's plan. And it seems like right now we have two different plans. I know I know some will say it's one plan, but we're really going in two different directions right now. And so I think how I guess my question to you is how, given the scope of what you're working with, will you help us identify really the separation in where we're connected to and not connected to the county roles and responsibilities? Because that's where we seem to have the tension is we keep thinking the others are responsible for something, or when we share it, then it gets done in mediocrity. So so I'm um or duplicating effort. So I'm just just curious, how do you, in your experience, work to sort through that?
Uh, yeah, great question. I I mean, so first, you know, w- we've worked with the city manager's office to invite and include the county and and a- all of the kind of regional stakeholders in our e- engagement sessions. So while the city is leading on this issue, the the point is to say we we want everyone included. Um and and that way, it becomes a shared product. Um so so that's one dimension of it. It doesn't necessarily mean it's widely adopted, right? That that that's a kind of a second step in all of this. But this is where the implementation planning, that next layer, I I think really does. Um first, it helps socialize the framework and really test it to see if if, right, it can be adopted across the region. But the other thing it does is it allows all of us to contemplate in a very honest and practical way. What's the first step we can all take together, or what are the steps we can take together? And so it lo- uh it aligns us on a set of right now commitments or the potential for right now commitments. Um and I think that it's through those types of act it it's getting that kind of clarity and and then answering the next question, which is, and then what's the structure that we need that to really support all of us in in honoring these commitments and moving forward? A- and I think you have lots of those pieces. I don't think this is a, you know, a a in needing to wipe the slate clean and start over. I I think I I do want to just value, I think um on the surface, the the recommendations are 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 right in that you have all of the the elements. Our job here is to say y- you've built this. There's good things in there. Now, how do we take it to that next level? How do we get it, you know, to the next iteration? Because we have a bigger vision than than, you know, and and a new goalpost that we want to to reach together. So um so that's my my experience. And and as far as from a a legitimate techniques perspective, you know, we're gonna use a variety. We're just gonna use good old engagement here, um both in kind of, you know, co-design. But but then we, you know, we hope that that there is interest in more targeted meetings so that we can uncover, you know, what is available and what isn't. Obviously, there's lots of public documents that that will allow us to dig into all of those pieces. We're gonna know, and and I hope I've demonstrated to you that I am, you know, I'm candid be- because we need to be here. Um wi- where there's conflict, right? Or or where there's there's challenge, we're gonna talk about it. We're gonna point it out. Um a- a- and ultimately, it's going to be up to policymakers um as to whether or not we can really remedy some of those challenges. The I think the job of staff, the job of the community is to really work to define what we want, where we want to get to. It's always the role of policymakers. You you know, have to make some of those hard decisions about about, you know, how feasible it is or how possible it is to to move the pieces in place to get it done.
I I appreciate that, and I'll sort of lead to my, you sort of sort of, you you sort of led to where my next question is going. I'll just say that um I think you're gonna fit right in in this community, even though you say you're new to learning it, because you used analogy that uh you worried about getting over your skis. Um so so I think you're gonna fit right in uh here in Boulder. Um my second question is sort of like, how do we set up the assumptions for where that ult- you know, some of those ultimate goals go, right? Because there's sort of what we do here in the city, and we can sort of evaluate, make assumptions based on what we have direct control over. And then there's kind of like, how do we interface with HSBC in the county? And then there's really the ultimate goal, which is I I and maybe this is just, you know, phase seven of this beginning process. But for me, I'm just wondering, are we eventually heading towards how we can shape a conversation so that the logical conclusion of this effort is that every community in our region has a suite of these solutions in their community that are meeting local and regional needs and a shared uh a solution to a shared problem? And I think that's that's maybe where the tension currently is, but I'm wondering, is this gonna lead us in that direction um in in a manner?
Yeah, you know, I think that you know, part of what you're reflecting is you this is your going going to be a strategy that reflects the will of your region, right? And the norms of your region. And so um our job is to bring some of that kind of the the analytical pieces to the table that help you make make decisions about whether those norms are serving your interests. Um or or whether those norms or whether there there are alternatives to those norms that you want to consider. Um a- a- but at the end of the day, I I just want to be really cognizant, like w- we're not gonna propose a strategy that is isn't that can't be implemented. Be- because what value is that? So so we're gonna, we're gonna work with all of you to take into consideration. So if the answer is we don't want to function on as one shared system, we want, we want, I I'm just, I'm being extreme here, but we want each municipality to have its own separate system and everyone to be serviced in that, then we'll run the analysis and and help you really understand, you know, what that would look like and and also what's realistic if it that doesn't happen, right? And be- because that's the other side of this. Those are those unintended consequences that we want to balance in this process. So um a- you know, at the end of the day, it it always comes back to leadership uh on on these issues um and making making those those hard decisions. Um a- a- and I'm a big believer um in setting a good vision and and working toward it. Um so I I hope that answered it.
It it does, and I'm 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 just, I'm I'm very impressed with how you're navigating the questions and also your your how you're attacking uh what's what's in front of you in in our community. So so thank you, Mandy. I appreciate it.
Okay, that looks like that's it for questions. I'll give another moment. Okay, that's Lauren.
No, I just want to go first on responses.
Oh, okay, okay. Let's go to feedback. Uh it looks like uh actually, I think Aaron, I think Aaron's hand is up first. And then Lauren.
Lauren, if you want to go first, go go for it. All right, um well, anyway, so uh Ma- Megan, uh Mandy, I'm sorry, I was thinking about Megan from before. Uh Mandy, thanks so much for for being here, and I am uh truly excited to have you and your team on board. Um so just to say a few things that we pretty much already know, but just to get them on the record, like we all heard in the first seg- se- segment how many different ways we're working on the problem of ho- of homelessness in our community and how many successes on how many different fronts that we've had and all the people that have been helped and all the people that have been housed, right? And so we have a lot to be proud of. But it is still nowhere close to adequate to the need, right? And this is the challenge that we're struggling with, and I think we heard some of that frustration uh come out from some council members earlier in the meeting about, okay, that's great that we're doing well at a lot of things, but what do we do next that's different enough to really make progress on this problem? Because we need more, we need different, we need more. We're not sure exactly what the next um more and better is. Um but that is what we need. And so, Mandy, I'm very excited to have you on board, because the things you're talking about give me hope that we can figure out what those next steps are to really make the the a big difference in terms of making um significant progress from where we are now, because there are too many people out suffering on our streets, and there are too many kind of ancillary impacts from people not having homes. So not saying anything we don't all know, but this problem is so huge and so complex, we gotta be doing something different. And so very excited to be working with you and figuring out what that different is um and looking forward to the conversations to come. So I'm more optimistic as of right now than I've been, and I don't know how long after hearing um what you're talking about. Thank you.
Okay, Lauren, and then Nicole.
Thank you, and thank you all for sticking with us to this late hour. It's much appreciated. Um I really appreciated get you the examples you gave us for the success says you've seen. Um and I'm really excited for the kind of analysis that you're talking about, not just not because I think we're going down the wrong paths currently, but for the potential it has to help us move forward in dealing with this complicated issue um with more confidence. Um I'm really excited to hear um more about your ideas around how we can get people into housing more efficiently and how we can balance community needs in our public spaces. Um you've already touched on this a bit, but I'm really excited for the or or I, one of the things I'd like to see is suggestions and cost related to several different goals. So, you know, kind of at the highest level, sorry, I'm also wanting to participate. Um how much it would cost us um and what kind of sort of broadly it would take to eliminate how homelessness in our community, not because I think we're necessarily in a financial place to do that right now. But I think it's good to kind of have the full spectrum on the table so that we understand, you know, where we're at in that total continuum. Um and then kind of the next level down of like, what would it take to make a noticeable improvement in our systems um that would be evident to our community? Um and then given our financial uncertainty, you know, if we can't make increases, um what are we doing to make our systems more efficient? And in the event of a crisis crisis and we need to cut funding, what are the crucial things that um are sort of most important to maintain? Um and then finally, one of the things you talked about that I'm interested in the data on is sort of the magnet effect and how the magnet effect might be different at these different levels and what kind of it currently is now for our community. Um thank you.
Okay, Nicole, and then Tina.
Thank you so much. Um and just really, I'm I'm so looking forward to uh to these discussions. Um so I just to some of um Taysha's questions around data and information. Um there's a piece of information that I'm hoping will kind of come out of this process to help us as policymakers. Um so our finance team sent us a spreadsheet last fall that laid out all of our HHS programs, budget allocations, number of people served, so we could kind of get that holistic sense. Um and then the memo tonight had some information on uh which programs are achieving the outcomes that we targeted in our twenty twenty five budgeting process. And just a side note to to city staff, um I absolutely love the visuals that you use to represent where we were uh meeting or not meeting our intended uh budget outcomes for the year. So thank you for that. That was really helpful. But as a policymaker, I think what 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 would really help me is to see kind of the landscape of of different types of homelessness. Uh the people who are in those particular types of homelessness, so maybe it's um family, single adult sheltered, single adult unsheltered. And then kind of see where the where are we currently allocating resources among those different um buckets of people? Because I I I think there's conversations in there and, you know, uh for instance, we talk about our high utilizer program. Um investing in the people who are uh leading to the most costs is really helpful and it tends to require more to get there. So I I think this is just some of the information I'm hoping to have at that more um kind of holistic level of where are things right now? Where are we spending our money right now? Um and and what what may have the biggest um payoffs or or what is kind of the lowest hanging fruit, where if we invest just a little bit more into this bucket over here, like family homelessness, uh we can have some really major long-term outcomes by um breaking that pipeline between child homelessness and and adult homelessness, for example. So um anyway, so I'm just, that's kind of I I'm hoping for something that kind of pulls things together, because that, at least for me as a policymaker, is really what I'm needing. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Tina and then Tara.
Yeah, um thank you for the overview, and I'm really looking forward to the work that Clouds will be doing here in the city and certainly rely on this outside knowledge and a fresh set of eyes. Um so I hope um I don't want you to be constrained in any way, and I echo those thoughts about the budget. Um scenarios would be great so that we could have different visions and different outcomes based on what our investment levels might be in the issue. Um just a couple of things that I'm curious about, but am completely flexible at this time, because I want this to be an open, thoughtful process um is just um thinking about just our overall system capacity and how, what are the levels we can pull to increase capacity if we're able to? Um the other piece is um helping to create metrics and outcomes that are visual uh that can be shared by our community so that we have a shared understanding of where we're headed, and and you touched on that, but I really like the language that you use with that. Um and then finally, just getting a better idea of our nonprofit landscape. Uh we are re- a relatively small county of three hundred and thirty thousand people, and we have a lot of people involved in this, so it's difficult to sometimes track and and understand everything. So if there is any kind of visual map of all these different service providers that are interacting, um that would be great. And then the the other thing I want to say, because we're on the topic of hous- housing in general, is I'm continually impressed by the work of Kurt Finbauer's team. And when you think about the real estate market in Boulder and how difficult it is and how many people are coming into the community, and I sort of referenced this in my hotline about population changes, I think the work his team has done to create space and housing in a city of our size is actually phenomenal, and I want to lift that up at this time and and appreciate that. So I echo that we really have a lot of extraordinarily positive things to build on, and we're not looking at this as building from a deficit, but from a yes and. Um so I'm excited for this work. Thank you.
Tara.
Me. Um so I'm excited also.
Um so I'm excited also. And first, I wanna thank all of my colleagues that went before me in all these comments. Because I did out each one, they were awesome. Um so I'm gonna add to that and I'm gonna say, it looks like, I can't imagine that we're not gonna have to cut somewhere. Because ARPA is gonna end soon. And, you know, we have our new, you know, administration. And so and the other thing is, is governments don't tend to love to end any program. So it's just the nature of government, not necessarily just our government. Um so with that, I'm hoping for a really, you know, honest analysis. Like, I'm emotionally attached to our housing retention programs. Because I feel like of all the things that we can do in our limited toolbox, keeping somebody housed. Is much better than the alternatives. Actually, we don't even have alternatives and I guess they go back to being unhoused and that's just not. You know, helpful and good. Help doesn't help them, but I'm also open to the fact that I'm not sure what gets. What has the most impact for people and I'm not sure which maybe is a little bit too wasteful for the amount of money that we have. So I guess real honesty and, you know, don't break my heart, take away this or that program, but I'm gonna say. That I I wish that, you know, speak into our lives, so to speak. And tell us what are, what's are, what are the way forward, what is the way forward? Especially because I assume we will have to cut funding, uh which none of us wanna do, but might just have to be. And so that's my uh dream request right there. Thanks for all you do.
Thanks, Tara and Matt.
Uh appreciate that, Ryan. Um. Uh I, you know, it's funny, uh Tara just mentions, you know, we have a, we don't seem to cut programs. I've always joked that pilot programs are a euphemism for in perpetuity. Um I know, I know Nuria loves that, but um nonetheless, she throws her eyebrows up. Um but, you know, I mean, in all honesty, I think there's um something that I I I'm interested in is is. The really hard conversations, because that tells me we're heading in the right direction. And I think as we saw a little bit earlier, w- we weren't being drawn into the hardest of conversations. And I think that there's a craving for that. Um I think it's it's overdone, so. Um a- and the other thing I'm curious about is I noticed that, you know, the city has its hands in every pot, in every kind of program. To serve our unhoused community. And is that the right way to do it? And and so I think that there's some really uh interesting questions that I look forward for us to un- uncovering. Um and even if it takes a little longer, I think we need to get this right. I know you say July and I I appreciate the ambition. But if it takes us longer to do it, then I then I'm certainly okay with us taking longer. So I I don't want uh our budget process or something to artificially. Uh accelerate or bring conclusion to the work. I think the work's done when the work's done. Um and I just want you just know that I I like be permissive to have that opportunity to take the time that you need. And don't be held to some arbitrary deadline that that we think we're setting for you. If if you need more time, please take it.
Any more, uh, thank you, Matt, any more comments? Okay, I will uh I will offer one. Um just a brief thought on. What I think will make the update plan successful. Um there's a few things. This is a kind of a log frame or a strategy sort of framework. Um so first. Goals or outcomes that explain clearly what are the things that if we achieve will mean we're successful. And I would, as a part B to that, I would love to see um candidate goals or outcomes that we didn't select. Um just so that's all kind of um, you know. Visible in a similar space, so that's the first thing. Second thing is a change model or a some. S- uh expression of what we believe to be true about how we will achieve those those goals or outcomes. So that we all um. I guess whether, you know, we, it it's our belief or not, we all at least. Ultimately, will be able to express what does the city believe it needs to do in order to achieve those goals. Um the third, uh a linkage to funding and some. Some way to show how we intend to allocate resources against that that change model and, you know, maybe with some. Consideration of funding that doesn't exist that we would wish would exist, but just just to create a um a linkage. And then finally, what data we will need to have going forward. Um to to measure performance and iterate. And I would encourage us to be brave about specifying data that we don't have. And thinking maybe in the future, what would we wish we had set up to to collect data for that we, you know, now do have in the future. Um so that's a little bit general, but um as a. From a policy standpoint, I think that is the kind of thing we need and I think the next councils and so on will will benefit from. So that's what I have. Um and I don't see any more hands and if I've done my um. My math and my reading right, I think that takes us to the end. So but let me just check with Kurt, Mark, Nuria. Anything else um from your ends?
I defer to Kurt and Mark because they have done this admirably, in particular Kurt. And we just to thank you to um our county partners, our consultant partners, Mandy, for sticking with us so late. But Kurt, your team has done an amazing job trying to synthesize this information, so thank you. But Kurt, pass it to you.
Yes, uh thank you and thank you, Council, for your um comprehensive feedback tonight and. Um uh Matt, your introduction to tough conversations, we look forward to those as well. Um we're excited to work with the uh the Clutch team. And um excited about their experience that they can bring to our environment. We um we uh just completed a um a twenty twenty four. Uh reports. Um that has a lot of data and information on the outcomes of this past year. And the evolution of the programs that occurred over this last year. I will send that out on hotline and I think my request, Council, is to receive your your feedback. On what what you would like to see differently, what's missing, what uh what that is helpful. And um what what that is missing. I think that will be, really help us in. Uh setting the stage in in moving forward. So um with uh with much appreciation, um we will send that out to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Mark, any last words?
No, just to appreciate staff's work tonight, our all of our partners and Council for the for the feedback.
Okay, well then, with no other items on tonight's agenda, I will close this meeting at eight thirty-three P M Boulder time.
All right, great work, Ryan. Thank you. Thanks for it, Ryan.
Bye, everyone.
Good job, Ryan.